Good evening. I'd like to call the Alton Board of Selectmen's Meeting, May 4th, 2020, to order at 6:00 PM. Please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and moment of silence. And if I could have the Fire Chief lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is in the line. It actually stands, "My nation, unto God, with the faithful and with the obedient, shall be thy own."
Until further notice, to keep our members and staff safe and to comply with the Order Number 91-88, state emergency and governor's orders, restrictions on public gatherings, town of Alton is moving from in-person meetings to remote audio participation meetings. To remotely attend the meeting, audio only, visit our website, www.alton.nh.gov for telephone access and remote access instructions listed on the news and announcements on the homepage or telephone the Selectmen's Office, (603) 875-2113 or (603) 875-0229 between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM for dialing code and meeting ID for each Selectmen's meeting. Gentlemen, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I'd like to add a couple things.
Okay.
On that new business, cemeteries and rumble strips. Before they go back in.
Okay, the only thing I'd like to say in the future when we amend the agendas, last week there was a little confusion in the way the meeting ran last week. I was a little frustrated when I left here. Just the way the meeting went. Mr. Holt had submitted some papers, and I don't mind amending the agendas, don't get me wrong, but the problem with amending it last week caused a lot of confusion. Two of the board members stood up, one over the other member. There was a lot of discussion. There was really too much discussion that would have been hell on that to amend the agenda that night because we didn't all have the paperwork. So as a short amendment to the agenda, I can see entertaining that as a board. If it's anything lengthy, I'd like to have you get in contact with Liz. That's going to put it on the agenda. I know some things do pop up after the agenda is done, but to keep our meeting short because that's what we're supposed to be trying to do. And I realize there's other town businesses we have to focus on. We haven't been. Liz has those in her office, so she's trying to slide them in slowly as she can. Primarily has to do with the, our meetings right now, the pandemic, different things that have to be taken care of. But if we can just keep that to a slow pace when we amend the agenda, that it would be much appreciated for everybody concerned. So at this time, Tom, I have a question.
Yes, sir. I agree with you 100%. So what's the procedure? If we want to put something on the agenda...
Do you think it's going to be any lengthy or hefty discussions? I would like to see you get in contact with Liz, and Liz will have Mary put it on the agenda.
Well, see, I think that should be for anything because of the fact, unless it's an emergency declared by the chairman, Mr. Chairman, you, like Virgil, you just brought up the two tonight. I'm not, I might not be prepared. I'm not prepared for that this evening because I reviewed this agenda before I came here. And adding on to the agenda, and I did it last week because the board was doing this.
Yeah.
I agree with you. But I think that should be something you do at this meeting. Otherwise, we'll do it through the procedure of the town administrator.
Town administrator. Town administrator. Because that way, if you need any information, she can get it ahead for you in advance and for all members.
This is real.
I don't, I really don't mind, I mean, if it's a short issue when it comes up, it might have been received or happened, I don't mind it myself because I've done it myself when I've sat on the other side. And, but anything that has to have a lot of paperwork detailed into it, I don't. If it's more for information purposes to bring it up so it's put on the agenda for next week, that's fine, but I would just like to have us be more courteous than what we were last week, each other. If we can do that, that would be great. We can get through these meetings a lot quicker and a lot easier. So a motion right now to amend the agenda to number five for cemeteries and number six for rumble strips. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is made, and Virgil McDonald to amend the agenda, and second by Phil Whitman. Any other discussion? All those in favor, I'll pull the board. Mr. Holt.
Oh.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. LaChelle.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes. This time, agenda passes as amended. Move on to emergency management update. We have Fire Chief Bodine with us tonight. We had Police Chief Ryan Heath last week. This is for the public out there to bring you up to date on some of the status that is going on with the emergency management team. Chief Bodine is the assistant directed to the emergency management team. He's here tonight to talk to you folks about what's been going on and possibly what the emergency management team has been working on. Chief?
Thank you. So this is going to be a little bit of a repeat from the last one I was here because most of the stuff hasn't changed, but there was a little bit of an update. So your emergency management team continues to meet twice a week during the COVID-19 pandemic. We're monitoring the state of emergency very closely. The precautions we are taking are still in place. Some of those are that we've closed government buildings to the general public, closed recreational facilities and other gathering locations. We've educated and we continue to educate the town employees on the symptoms and prevention of COVID-19. We are monitoring all town employees for signs of illness, including daily temperature checks. We have transitioned many employees to working from home. There's been an increase in the amount of cleaning and disinfecting that are done on a daily basis in all of the town buildings. And we've increased the amount of personal protective equipment for our first responders and other town employees that may have to enter buildings. With the nicer weather here, we know the cabin fever has set in. We know people want to go out, do things and recreate. We're aware of the number of people that are hiking Mount Major on a regular basis. We're aware of the number of people that are in the bay and the influx of seasonal residents that are probably coming. We're working with the local businesses in the bay to maintain social distancing when it gets crowded. With that said, one change the emergency management team has made today is to turn on seasonal water on a gradual basis and get a few customers on at a time. As a reminder, the newest emergency order from the governor is still a stay-at-home order. Stay-at-home 2.0 allows for our businesses to open back up with some restrictions. The fire department has already been in contact with several restaurants in town, aid them in some of their outdoor seating. Please continue to visit our local establishments and support our local economy. As before, if you must go out, go to work and then go back home. Go out and get your supplies and then come back home. Still maintain social distancing. Do not visit with friends and family that you do not live with. Do not go anywhere if you are sick. Wash your hands often. Disinfect hard surfaces at your home and your workspace regularly. If you're able to, get a face cover and wear it while you're in public. If you have any questions about COVID-19, the state of New Hampshire suggests you call 211, which is an information line. You can check the CDC and Department of Health and Human Services websites as well. By continuing these steps, we can continue to keep the spread low in our town. Be mindful of others. Do not forget, you can still be a carrier of the virus without showing symptoms. Please continue to take care of yourselves and each other. As always, know that your emergency services are here to respond for your needs.
Thank you, Chief.
Do you guys have any questions that we can, or I can try to answer for you?
Water now? I will let during the Selectmen's report.
I just didn't know if they're going to have questions to begin with.
You folks have any questions for the chief or when he reported? You're going to stay with us for later on the agenda?
Yeah, I think at the beginning of the agenda.
Well, we only have, his is going to be the first one on new business. So moving on to new business, I want to thank the Fire Chief and his crew, first responders and our police department for the outstanding job they have done. The only thing, really, what he said about the bay, a lot of you folks out there this weekend did see the traffic circle was crowded, the bay was crowded, motorcycles, hot rod cars. The police department did go down to the bay. They did talk to a lot of people about social distancing, asking them to spread out a little bit. They do not have the right through this pandemic to say you need to disperse, according to the way the police chief reported on it today. It is the governor's orders to be socially distanced. So they're trying to be nice, be courteous, go down, talk to the folks, teach them about the social distancing and why we're having to do it. I would hope that the public would ensue what the police department and the fire department have to say when they sit and talk to them and give them their respect because they're only of your concern and your help at the most important. So at that, move on to new business. Fire Department purchase emergency response trailer.
And vehicle. Also, on the phone should be Captain O'Brien, who really ended up...
Captain O'Brien, okay. Captain O'Brien, are you on the phone with us?
I think so. It just said I'm unmuted.
Okay, you are unmuted.
Perfect. Well, I suspect you folks have had the chance to review the letter at this point. If anybody has any questions, I mean, I've got a whole pile of information in front of me, but if anybody has anything, I'd be happy to answer it.
I got a question on the trailer.
Sure.
Because you've got, where you're adding slide doors with screens, tinted window, electric jackhoist. When you're adding all these, why are we, I understand the enclosed trailer, but why are we outfitting it like we are, spending the extra money?
Yeah, sure thing. So, I mean, in the long run, the options that we're adding, so the camper style, the RV door, the windows, that kind of aspect of things, we're also looking to use this as like a mobile rehab trailer. So if we've got long duration incidents, whether it be on Mount Major or any kind of an ice rescue type incident, long drawn out forestry incident, this will give us a place that's kind of in, out of the elements if it is raining or snowing or anything like that, that we can do rehab rather than occupying the backside of one of our ambulances for, you know, emergency transports. We can do all that rehab in an enclosed space that, you know, we can seat several people. And we're just really just trying to use the, our vehicles to their, you know, to their max. So while this, it will be, you know, probably $1,000 or so in extra options, it just, it adds all that much more ability and flexibility to the operation.
You don't think just a trailer with a door on it can set up a sliding door?
I don't, I don't believe it's a sliding door, and I mean, we didn't specify any tinted window. We just specified a window so that way there could be some airflow when we close the door. I mean, certainly, just a, just a regular style door would be fine. We just figured promoting some airflow would probably be a good thing.
Put these in as a tinted window package.
I mean, I'm happy to take out the tinted aspect of it, but it wasn't requested that way. I guess the other thing that, I mean, looking at it now that a tint could provide for us is when this is sitting somewhere stationary and one of us isn't right there next to it, people can't necessarily see what is inside. So I guess that could actually probably be a benefit in terms of security.
We can't get the association to replace it? Didn't they buy this in the beginning?
So the association did purchase this vehicle and the trailer back in 2007 after a significant run of rescues on Mount Major. They raised approximately $14,000 for the purpose and donated it in its entirety to the town. Since then, this vehicle responds on well over 20 incidents a year on Mount Major and saves countless man-hours. I truly believe it's an asset to the department, and while the association could fund it, it was just brought forth that the town purchased the vehicle this time around.
Oh, I believe it is a very good asset to have with Mount Major and stuff. I mean, don't get me wrong, I think it's the greatest thing ever to be able to get up there quicker and bring patients down and stuff.
Okay, I want to entertain, Pat, I want to entertain Mr. Holt. I believe he has a question for you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How you doing?
A little different capacity tonight, but I'm well. I'm well. Thanks for asking.
Pledge of allegiance. I, I've just got a question. I, how come we didn't go out for bids?
Well, long story short, long story short with the bid process is nearly every time we put something out to bid, we'd get, we get next to no response on it. So we took it upon ourselves this past summer to go out and do a lot of demoing and trials on the vehicle and figure out exactly what was going to best fit our operation. We did that with a bunch of area departments, and it all boiled down to this one. So essentially, we reached out to all the manufacturers within, I would say, 60 miles or so, and these are the folks that came back and provided us the quote.
Mr. Chairman, if you read Personnel Policy, it spells it out, the bid process pretty much to the T. Now, when you do it, according to our Personnel Policy, the board looks at the specifications before it goes out to bid. That would cure some of your questions there, Virgil. Then it goes out to bid with the specifications. Now, I'm looking at what we have in front of us tonight, and nothing's the same. I don't know if these people were given specifications to do the bid or the quoting. And as far as, if you can get three quotes, you sure in heck can get three bids. If you do it, advertise it in the paper or with a computer, website, whatever, I'm not a computer person, but you can do it that way. Or you can call vendors with the specification sheets and send it to them. But if we're not going to abide by the Personnel Policy, we should sit down and change it so we don't do it anymore. And the Personnel Policy states are pretty clear, anything over $5,000 must go out to bid, and there's procedures on how to do it. And it's not that I'm against it. I just, I'm a bit of a quote. It's a bit of a quote.
No, this is informing you, it says bid or quote. I have the first two, I have the three. Okay, so before we all jump in here, I understand what Pat did. They go on, get three quotes. I know on our policy, normally we do ask, we've asked other departments to come in bids. I know also in the past, we've asked for bids, such as fire trucks. We got one quote.
Ambulance came back with one.
Ambulance came back with one, twice. Highway Department, I think we only have one because a lot of manufacturers weren't out yet. And that is the times that we are experiencing that because so many different businesses are getting out of it. I still like to see sealed bids because that way there, everyone bids on the same thing. And it comes in, it's opened up, nobody gets a quote, or somebody says, well, what did they quote you not, even though I'm not saying the fire department would. All I'm saying is, there's no temptation of the company call up and say, well, what did they quote you? We'll match it or something. So the sealed bid is nice, and I agree with that over the $5,000. But we're here tonight to discuss this here, something that is out with its life, has a useful purpose, and we have to decide whether we're going to go forward with this or we're going to send it back out and ask for a sealed bid from the three different places.
But having said that, with the bids, this town has a habit, when people take their time out to bid, and we get the bids in, and somebody don't like it, we send them back out to bid again so these vendors don't want to bid on stuff for the town of Alton anymore.
Well, it's not just...
And that's half the problem.
It's not just the town. Other towns are running the same thing. It does happen.
We seem to do it a lot.
I haven't seen us do it so much, send it back out to bid, unless we only had one bid. We tried to go back out and get two more bids. The second time around, we won the award. I think the last couple of times, we just awarded because the athletes are there, there's not enough companies that want to quote on the specs that we have. The ambulance came in, we quoted, we won the specs on a Dodge, especially on box on the back end with certain apparatus. All the companies could do it. There was only one or two up there that were willing to do it.
Put it back out to bid, he came back higher.
The thing that does impress me about this, they went without, with other towns, went to different areas, so other towns were looking at the same apparatus that we were looking at.
We tested every vehicle that's available.
Four-wheelers do as good as the six. Now, how bad is the one we got now? Real bad?
Yeah, we're not, every time it starts, we're happy. And when it, when it does start, sometimes it stalls out and then it has this tendency to overheat.
One of the worst problems... It's time.
It's beyond time.
And one of our worst problems is, it doesn't get run all the time.
Right, right.
Not like someone that has a firearm or somebody that has a construction...
It's also climbing Mount Major with personnel.
Well, I understand. We're running it higher, but it's like it's not always run.
Right.
That doesn't help a piece of equipment, just like our fire trucks. Fire trucks, we turn in very low mileage, but they just wear out because they're not used as much. And when they're used...
I shouldn't say beat.
Yeah. Mr. LaChelle?
Yes. You said you went out and you, you did about a 60-mile radius of different companies, Freedom Cycle and Silver Motors and HK. Did you look into over in Offy over at John Deere? And they, they have, they're one of the original, the Gator, the six-wheel. Did you look into that, right in Offy?
Sure, yeah. And I use the John Deere product at work, and I certainly would entertain that. However, the six-wheeled version that John Deere offers essentially has no rear suspension. So when you talk about trying to climb up and over rocks, it just doesn't have the crawling ability and suspension throw that you look for when we're climbing the ledge in the mountainous terrain. It's essentially two solid axles mounted right to a frame, so it really wouldn't offer what we need it to.
Okay. Is that something that you put in your specs when you, when you put these out for the bidding process?
Essentially, when, when we went out for this, like I said, we did a lot of testing last summer, and actually brought a bunch of departments together that own basically every type of UTV out there, and we brought them all up on Mount Major for a training day, including Guilford, who has a, who has a six-wheeler. And essentially, us and Guilford were the only ones that really made it without too too much trouble. So we knew we wanted to stay with the six-wheel product. And currently on the market, aside from that John Deere that doesn't have a suspension throw, the only manufacturer on the market that's making a six-wheeled vehicle at this point is Can-Am. Polaris is no longer in the game. So we specifically requested a Can-Am 6x6.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What's the urgency of the purchase of these two pieces?
In terms of urgency, like the chief kind of alluded to, essentially, every time this starts up, we're thankful. It does have an issue with trying to stay running. It's been back to the dealership for some tinkering, and it runs okay for a few miles, and then the next time we take it out, it's right back to the same problem again. There's a lot of suspension components that are kind of like right at the edge of its lifespan, and essentially, if we don't, and I, and I hate putting pressure on a situation, but if we don't replace it rather soon, then we're probably looking at another $3,000 just in suspension and differential work that's going to need to get done in the very, very near future as a critical repair.
How long would it take you to do the bid process?
Usually, when we put things out to bid, Mr. Chairman, feel free to correct me. Usually, we try to put things out for at least a month. I guess it would kind of be up to the board's pleasure at that point.
Then you're correct on that, it is a month.
Which suggests you into June or July before you even get one, we're in the busy season.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The board has to make a decision tonight. This is well over $5,000, the total purchase, it's a package. Each one is over $5,000. And if you look on page 71 of your Personnel Policy, it spells it out. Maybe I'm missing something else along the way. But I, I'm not convinced that these quotes you have are apples for apples because you didn't have a specification sheet, to the best of my knowledge, that went to each applicant. You got on your trailer, for example, one outfit has a walk-on roof. The other two folks don't even mention a walk-on roof. Did you spec out a walk-on roof? I don't know. I just have a serious problem of not knowing what was specked out in what you got for quotes here.
I can speak to the walk-on roof piece, and I understand that your concern is greater than that. But the concern with the walk-on roof, this is a southern-built trailer meant for the southern part of the country. So these trailers, specifically on the low bid quote that you're looking at, are not designed for the snow load of New Hampshire, and we could risk the ceiling coming down because they're just simply not built for it. So that's the walk-on roof that you're seeing here.
Why aren't we buying one from the north that's built for up here?
And I appreciate that. I just, this is, this is a local dealer. I just wanted to be able to provide three quotes across the board, kind of of all the options, so that way you folks could make the best decision.
Hang on. That's a local dealer, buying a trailer from the south that doesn't hold the snow load for up here? Why are we dealing with it?
Again, I just wanted to be able to provide a wide variety of options.
Is this, is this the old six-wheeler? Does that have a closed-in trailer?
No.
It currently has...
But...
I'm sorry, I just, I didn't hear the tail end of your question there. It currently has a 6x12 open trailer.
So what is the purpose of having a closed trailer in the first place? To store it?
The enclosed, yeah, exactly. So I'm not sure, if any of you have been down the station recently, certainly space is an issue, and this has come up in plenty of other conversations. Essentially, that vehicle lives inside at the moment, one for security and two for the ability to respond rapidly. And currently, in the position that it's parked, gives us about two feet to get around it into the back bay. So a large part of this is to eliminate some of the storage issues we have at the central station, and then also, again, as a secondary use, just trying to make the most of a, the most of an asset when we purchase one.
The one that's a stage in that.
So the ton of the trailer we have right now actually hangs over the bumper of the ambulance. And this unit is actually a little bit longer, so it needs a bigger trailer, and it really won't fit where this trailer is. So that storage unit we've been working on outside is going to end up over there with a walk-on ton.
That's what I was going to get at.
How much is in... We're calling the...
Holt first. Holt? The walk-on roof is very important because of the fact that trailer will be staying outside, I believe, for storage.
Yes, sir.
I also use a trailer for the very similar purpose. I keep a vehicle in it all winter in storage, and I don't have a walk-on roof. But I have to keep the roof cleaned off of that trailer, or it'll cave in. So I'd never buy another trailer again without a walk-on roof in New Hampshire. I don't care where the trailer comes from. I bought my trailer from a local dealer in Laconia without a walk-on roof. I just priced one out from him with a walk-on roof. So there's another issue. That's why our Personnel Policy spells it out on how to go about purchasing this stuff. We would have looked at these specs. I know a little bit about trailers. I think a couple of us, I have some. Yeah, I know Ruben, but we might have picked some of this stuff up for you. But it's in our Personnel Policy, and I'm going to have to vote against it, Patrick. I'd love to vote for it because I know we use it, it's a good piece of equipment, and you should have a trailer, an enclosed trailer for it if you're going to... And you should have a trailer, an enclosed trailer for it if you're going to store it. But I'd like to see it done the right way. Either that, or I think we have to sit down and do some serious thoughts about changing our personnel policy on purchasing equipment over a certain amount of money. This is McDonald. You have a question? And, um, is there any other further discussion for Pat O'Brien, Captain O'Brien? Anything for the chief? This time here. Don't think, Pat, before you, before you go, I would say, I'll vote for this tonight, but I would say in the near future that possibly go out, get the specs, bring them back to call the board, and then have the board will put it up to CO bid purposes. I will vote. Or Holt is right in what he's saying. But this is kind of an essence to get this going because everything that's going on in Mount Major, the last thing I want to do is see you guys get halfway up that mountain and break down and you can't rescue somebody. Because it'd be quite an embarrassment to the town of Alton and to your fire department. For, for, and I'm not going to say twenty-five thousand dollars is inexpensive money. It is very expensive, but I want to say the risk of someone breaking a leg or a bone sticking out through someone's leg is, is well worth spending this money tonight. So we have the safety and the apparatus you need to do your job. So at this time, I will take a recommendation or motion to award, um, purchase of emergency response vehicle and trailer of the chief's recommendation. Second, one who made the motion to approve the chief's recommendation of the purchase of the emergency response vehicle, Polish Ranger utility vehicle, and also purchasing from frontline trailers. Second by Mr. McDonald. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I would just want to say this.
So hold on. Mr. Whitman had his hand up first. Mr. Whitman?
Um, I'm kind of of the same mind as you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, we're in a situation right now where Mount Major has more traffic than usual, but I also agree with Mr. Holt. We've really got to stick to our, um, bid policy in the future. Uh, I'm looking at this as almost an emergency situation because of the increased traffic, and that's due in part to the pandemic we're going through right now. So whereas I feel I can vote for this tonight, in the future, we really got to get back to the bid process. We really do. So that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we only got one choice during an, uh, an emergency, emergency situation.
Thank you, Bill.
You just said exactly what I.
I feel the same way. I was just going to say the same thing. I agree with Mr. Holt as well. I think we should be following the bid process and doing it properly. Um, but I also agree with, um, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, we need to move forward with this this evening, but in the future, we really have to, um, plan on writing up, uh, exactly what is needed, how it is needed, the process. So everybody's it's not all over the place. This one company is doing one thing, another company's doing another thing, and the prices are all over the place. They all have the same specs. They all have the same information. And then we get that. I think it's important that we do that in the future. Uh, but I also say that, um, I think we need to move forward with this tonight. So because we're coming on a business season and with the pandemic, it's, it's needed.
Mr. McDonald.
Nope, they've said it all. I, I, I wouldn't vote for this again.
Yes, sir. Uh, I, I can understand your philosophies, but you know, you talk about, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned that, uh, you know, something happens up at the mountain, there's heavy traffic. Well, there's always been heavy traffic up there. But just the other night, we discussed an issue of somebody down in front of the village store almost broke their leg or got hurt, a woman getting out of a car in the big potholes. That was two weeks ago. I believe it was two weeks ago. Don't quote me falsely on the time, but nothing's been done about that.
Kicking the can down the road, like I said.
Well, well, what?
All right, enough.
You both interrupt the. I'll take, I'll, no, no, I'll take responsibility to sidewalk because I said I'd have pictures. But I haven't had pictures. Going down, taking ten minutes and taking pictures to get them to the town administrator. So me kicking the can down sidewalk is my fault. Nobody else's. Out of department head, they said I would take them. I have not done.
We all agreed to.
Well, let, let, let me finish. With this interrupting each other, we can't keep doing it. I can understand everybody's point, but you're right. Two weeks ago, the sidewalk was on me. I'll take full responsibility for that. But as far as this tonight, with the emergency apparatus we need from the mountain, I'd like to see us move on both for it or vote against it. We've all kind of said what we had to say, but in the future, we'd like to see quotes. And I think it should go out to all the department heads that anything over five thousand will follow the town policy unless it's a strictly emergency. I'm sorry if I snapped at you two of you for interrupting each other, but I, we just can't keep doing it.
Thank you.
Chairman, I had the floor. I'm sorry.
Oh, that was my fault.
Enough. Let's, let's move on. Is there any further discussion on this emergency vehicle? Right. Then I'm going to call for the mo, motion to be voted upon. Now, poll the board. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Lurichell.
Yes.
Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
I have to vote no for my previous reasons.
Okay. Mr. Wentworth, yes. Motion passes and you affirm it. Gentlemen, before I move on to the fire chief, I just skipped over one thing. And it's submission of public comments. Mr. Roberts is ready to on the phone for me. Cause last week, remember Mr. Shea had concerns and questions about Rob's Code Road. Mr. Roberts is on the phone tonight to answer those questions and concerns. You have a letter in your packet.
Thank you.
Stay in that. Chief, thank you. Sorry. Sorry, I didn't say, go ahead and go now.
Yeah, we have to have it tonight.
You too, sir. So Mr. Roberts, are you with us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, just to let you know, we got your response, um, that you're answering Mr. Shea. Um, did you have to send this letter to Mr. Shea or were you looking for us to read tonight in the record?
Well, I think we can read it tonight in the record, but you, I think we did send a response to Mr. Shea.
Well, then this is your letter. I'm going to let you read it into the record then.
I don't have it directly in front of me, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then I will read it for you, Mr. Roberts.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. From the Alton Highway Department, from Mr. Roberts, Highway Manager. Dear Mr. Shea, in response to your email, I wanted to give you a brief update on the status of Rob's Code Road construction process. The letter will be mailed out shortly notifying that the Highway Department be in the area cutting back brush and marking trees for removal. The next step will be to send out bids to have the road surveyed and the marked trees removed. This is for the phase one of Rob's Code Road only, consisting of the south entrance of Rob's Code, directly across from Quarry Road to Greentops, Canberra. You should have any further questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact my office at six oh three eight seven five six eight zero eight, or via email, highway at alton.nh.gov. We apologize during this project. Please be safe during these trying times. Respectfully, Ken Roberts. Thank you, Ken, for that response from Mr. Shea. And do you gentlemen have any other questions or concerns for Mr. Roberts? Okay.
Well.
He's on the agenda here for the collapsed wall. Yes, sir. We'll go, we'll, do you gentlemen want to move up number three to number two? Where we have Mr. Roberts on the phone.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ken, are you in a position to talk about the collapsed wall of Bunting Harmony Park right now?
Yes, I am.
Okay, sir. I'll let you have the floor.
Okay, we've got a quote from our wetlands people. It's nineteen hundred dollars, which needs to be approved prior to the Board of Selectmen. Uh, the reason part of this is as high as it is is because there's never been a wetlands permit taken out on that piece of property for anything. So it's a little more detailed than normal in order to get that wetlands permit in play. The other thing is that the question mark would be to the Board of Selectmen of where would you like to take those funds from?
Yeah. Mr. Uh, Mr. Lurichell is going to talk to you now, Ken.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, the, the wetlands permit that you have, you, that I, I've read all the paperwork on that. Um, but it also says that it's not going to alter in any way or shape or form canals, travelways, the boats or anything or but is property. Clearly, we have an issue. We have an issue with water that washed out and washed out a wall. Um, and I don't understand why can't this be put in the permit that we already have at hand and, and because of certain conditions? Did anybody ask to see if this could be taken care of, um, under the, the current permit application we have because of the redirection of water?
Okay, two things, two things.
Two things about this.
Under the water line. Sorry, go ahead.
Two things about this. Anything that abuts the water is a wetlands permit. That's the last part of your statement. Second part of the statement is the permit we have was for the footprint originally, the footprint of the existing wall. And that was it. It had nothing to do with the exterior walls. Third part of this, we just did an amendment to the rip raft that had to be put in front of the wall, the amendment which was already filed. So anything we go beyond that requires a permit. Now you're talking about, and, and I don't mean to put it this way, but a wall that was never had a permit that was existing, no matter how it came down, how it came down before we as the town or a contractor touches that under the direction of the town, it has to have a wetlands permit. Otherwise, we, we value what we have with the, you know, the report we have, the Wetlands Bureau. You step outside of the line that we have without a permit, then you open yourself up to an open liability.
It's, it's, one of these situations though, it'd be just like somebody building a house across the street from you and they redirect their water that goes right down into your foundation or down your driveway or ice plumbing down your driveway. It's redirecting. It directly involves and abut. And when in that case, that goes right into zoning or goes right into, um, right to the, the building inspector would be called to inspect that and that would have to be corrected.
I'm not saying it doesn't need to be corrected. What I'm saying is before you put your hands on that, a permit is required. That's all I'm saying. You have to have a permit from the Wetlands Bureau.
No, I understand. I understand. And I know that there was no permit hold on it. And, and I know that, uh, we have no idea how many years that wall was there. Um, okay.
All right, Mr. Roberts, I'm going to have Mr. McDonald talk to you now.
Yes.
Well, for the board too. Why are we pulling permits to fix an illegal wall that was put in illegally to begin with? The town shouldn't be spending funds on an illegal wall. If that was not permitted by wetlands to be put in there, then it shouldn't be in there. We shouldn't be the ones pulling permits for a private property to fix a wall that is illegal.
So I guess I'm going to step in there at this point. Philman Allen's piece of property bought this piece of property. Here we are, three years, three years. At that time, that wall was in there already prior to him buying this. And I know if you want to be a libertarian and say ownership is on the owner, but unfortunately, maybe there was no record of this. Maybe he didn't think of asking this record of this wall, but this wall is fallen over primarily due to our construction project on property line of our wall. Yeah. I believe the town has an obligation to its taxpayers and to the community when they disturb someone's property. They should fix it. As far as this wall being illegal, there was no permit ever put in. I guess there was. Maybe there, maybe, maybe there was a stone wall there one time and it was there for years and never had to have a wetlands permit in that case. Yeah, like what would we do on that? Thank for the nineteen hundred dollars that we should do it. The money should come out of the unanticipated expenses in the general government, item four one three zero eight nine nine. It did not come out of the Ox and Rec Highway Department. Come out of our budget because this is the something we want to stop there and turn it back to Mr. McDonald.
I worked on that late though. Twenty. And when we found places where we went in to do work, there wasn't permit, it didn't matter who owned the house. If it wasn't permitted and the shoreline's been changed, then the state steps in. We don't permit for anybody. The homeowners should be paying for this permit for that wall to be in there legally. And if not, go back on the people he bought that house from. But we shouldn't be buying permits for private people. That is a state road. And if the water ran off that state road, then it's a state's problem. That's not.
Mr. Holt. Uh, two good points have been made. Whose fault it is, I, I don't know. But the problem we have is this board, one member of this board has already led the person to believe we will fix it. Which I, I don't know if we should myself after listening to Burge at them. But the wall that was there wasn't much of a wall. Believe me, it was, it was junk. Uh, and my concern is how are we going to put it back? Are we going to put it back right? Or just pile up some blocks in there that are, that are existing? I don't know. And in order to do it, if do it right, we, you have to get a shoreline protection permit. It has to be gotten, no matter who does it. So that's a decision we're going to have to make. Who's going to pay for it? I'm not sure. Mr. Whitman, did you have something?
I did, but by no way.
Mr. Lurichell again.
Um, to correct Mr. Holt, I did not leave any, uh, the owner of the property that we were going to definitely fix us if we look into it to see if it could be fixed and put it back together. And that's all he was interested in. He realizes it wasn't the wall that was structured very well. We have no idea how old it is. It's probably twenty-five, thirty years old. Um, that's one of the oldest boat houses that I've seen in pictures alongside Harmony Park. It goes back into the eighteen hundreds. Um, so that being said, he was, he understands it was a, was a, uh, freestanding wall. It wasn't really a retaining wall, but nonetheless, it's old. And I was there concerned that as a selectman should be for all its citizens and all its taxpayers to see what we could do. That's what I did.
McDonald.
That wall, not worth, that might be the oldest boat. That's relatively bricks because they're not all beat up from the water. They're not all disintegrated like they do after twelve years or so.
Can anybody tell me?
The town of Alton should not be paying for private permits. That guy wants to pay for the permit and we fix the wall. That's one thing. But we're going to have permit costs for private property. You're going to have the town food down there. So you have the cost of that, their insurances and everything else, putting that thing back together. And that's a state road. And if the water's coming off that road, that is not from us. We dug dirt behind that road. If it's coming off that state road to get in there, then it's a state road. It's not the way we, Burge, the water's been redirected. You know it, man.
Mr. Roberts, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
And you tell me that the collapse of the wall, one that's, sounds like everyone's agreeing that it was not built by a wall shifter because they weren't, it was just a landscape wall. But does it look or appear that when we built our wall, that the water got redirected and washed down and got it behind?
I, I'm not really sure about that. We're, the directional water that we could find was actually, if I did a straight line up to the twenty-eight A, it was to the left of where we did our work that the water came down through. And it may have been coming there for a long time. I don't know. But the biggest evidence I saw is on the far end of the wall near the stairs. It was actually leaning out. So it looked like it'd been pushed for a while, whether it was frost or not. I don't know. It, it's all an assumption because we have no actual photographs of that, that wall being in play.
I appreciate that.
I do have one photograph taken from the top, um, standing on, up the road down. I'm just looking at the, the stones that were placed just before the new wall. And there's, there's lots of gaps there. It's just a shame that we can't. I know, I know if we were in construction and we were doing work on someone's home, um, inadvertently directed water on someone else's property, we'd have to fix it.
Here. Oh. Testimony against all class. I hate to say it, but I think we, we got to fight the bullet to fix it. I think we got to fight a permit or pay for the permit, shoreline protection. Uh, my other concern is how do we pay for it? Him had mentioned an emergency account.
Unanticipated funds out of the general bank account. Is that a whole you paid?
No, sir. I was just, I was just adjusting. I have the floor, Mr. Jim. I, I firmly believe that should come out of the, uh, the wall account, that we take the money out. It's part of the job, it's unanticipated, uh, I'm sorry, it should come out of that account, that's where it belongs. It's because of the wall, that's what everybody's saying. We built the wall, we changed the flow of the water, it's part of that job. Now, I have an additional question for, uh, Mr. Roberts.
You're on the floor right now, go ahead.
Uh, it really doesn't pertain to this, but it does and it doesn't. We have, on that wall project, we do have a shoreline protection permit now, right?
Yes.
Okay, who paid for that shoreline protection permit?
Town of Alton.
The town of Alton did? Did GMI?
GMI doesn't. I'm sorry, you were cut out on both sides of that.
Did Michi Block, Michi Block did some engineering, did Michi Block or GMI pay?
No, they don't pay for the wetlands permitting, wetlands were done by Stony Ridge Environmental, who are our wetlands people.
Okay, can I get a copy of that expenditure somehow?
I have it, and there's been some discussion on this, and I think you did get a copy of it from Laura, and it was, if I remember exactly, it was five thousand, if you give me just a second, I'll tell you exactly what the number was.
In, in my copy from Laura, there was no permitting fees in there. That's why I asked the question tonight. I don't wanna, I don't care about discussing it, I'd just like to have a copy of the permitting.
Okay, and I think you got a copy of it, because I was discussing this with Laura. The actual permitting fee for that project, when it, before it went out, and it was done on, um, let's see, six twenty-six of twenty seventeen was four thousand five hundred and twenty-four thirty-four.
The stuff I got from her does not list it at all. But you're saying it was four thousand five twenty-four?
Four thousand five hundred and twenty-four thirty-four.
That was totally, that was through Stony Brook.
Mr. Roberts?
Stony Ridge Environmental.
Stony Ridge, yes. Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Hey, do you get a copy of that? Okay, well, I don't mind, Paul's got it, so I will ask him to make a copy if I can get it to Mr. Holt, if he could please.
Well, would you like me to send a copy to the town hall tomorrow and make sure Mr. Holt gets it?
Yeah, well, that would be nice to make sure he's got the right one, yes. It was four thousand?
That's the one I, that's the one I have on file.
What was the amount again, four thousand what?
Four thousand five twenty-four thirty-four.
Okay, we.
And there's, there's a list of everything that was included. Wetlands application, wetlands plan, wetlands application, wetlands application, review of application, wetlands application in New Hampshire, Department of Environmental Services, wetland application feed for Harmony Park.
And in my package that I got, Mr. Chairman, this was mine. And I asked Laura about it, and she knew nothing about it.
Well, we'll make sure you get a copy now, Mr. Holt, okay? Mr. McDonald?
Mr. Holt brings up a pretty good point. If GMI was doing the job, and they left that site like they did, and water went in and knocked this wall down, GMI should be the one paying for it.
Mr. Roberts, you have anything to add to that?
I think Paul took pictures in December and the wall was intact, this happened sometime over the winter. Whether it was snow load up against the wall, it was water down over the wall, you understand, you're plowing twenty-eight A. I mean, everything that I say is snow or anything else, it's a complete guess of what all that was. But you're talking about something that was right there on top of twenty-eight A. And as far as pointing the finger, I guess Paul, Paul's mentioned that he had a picture in December and the wall was intact. So you're talking about something long after GMI left that happened.
Mr. Roberts, you have, you've given us the price of engineer, uh, wetlands shoreline protection permit, nineteen hundred dollars.
That was the quote.
That was the quote, what do you feel the cost of this project is for you to go in there with your crew and put this wall back in kind the way it was?
I figure it would take us two days, and, and I do have a theory to it, and I just have to check with Michi Corps to make sure that, uh, the bonding agent they use for the cap block that goes on our wall could be used on other concrete.
Two days, how many guys?
I'd say we'd put at least three down there. You have to scrape all the existing blocks, all handwork, no equipment on that job, all handwork.
You're gonna have to put a silt barrier in too, Ken?
Uh, not, no, I don't think so, I think it's cleaning the block, we set it all up on top of the, on top of the existing dock in order for it to dry, because we have to put a bonding agent on them as we stack them up out of the water. We'll put it back exactly the way it was, only what I can see on the left-hand side. The only thing I have to request of the board and the landowner, and I guess Paul could talk to the landowner about that, they have to sign something to indemnify the town after this wall's back up, because if this happens another three, four, or five years, does the town go back in and put it back up?
No, that's what I was just gonna say, that, that's what I was gonna say to you, Ken, before we go ahead with this project, send a letter to the neighbor, telling them what is, is going to be incurred by the town of Alton for what land shoreline permit, which I do not feel at this point we should have to pay for. That we will put the wall back in kind when they get their shoreline permit. We cannot say, we will not deny or agree that our retaining wall has washed out that wall, especially where it's been leaning, seemed to be leaning before, and there's possible other runoffs. That it was, it was intact in December, when GMI left. Uh, what happened over the winter from plowing, heavy rains, cannot say that was all caused by our wall. I'm requesting now that, the listening of things, every revise, we asked the neighbor, file for the permit. If Cindy will do it for the gentleman for nineteen hundred dollars, once he obtained the permit, and Cindy has, now we'll go back and put the wall back in kind, and we'll end our responsibility of this wall going forward. Now, does that sound to you, Ken? I don't know, and I'll ask the town administrator here in a minute. Maybe I said it too fast, I don't know.
You say it too fast. My thought was that before any work is done by the town, that a letter is sent to the property owner, letting them know of the procedure that you just put out there, but also that anything that happens to that wall that we will not be responsible for, because I can see the writing on the wall, years down the road, twenty years down the road, ten years. It falls again, they're gonna be calling the town again to put it back up, you didn't do it right ten years ago, and I want it done.
Well, that's why I say going forward, once this is done, the highway department puts the wall back in kind, that we're done with it, at this point, we no longer. Yes, but I'd like to have all this writing in first, and that the homeowner, the property owner pays for the permit. Mr. McDonald?
Down years ago, with town crew on Lily Pond Road, seven road. Because somebody had a picture of the town crew on that road. The town had to go up and put that road back to a class, uh, four or five, I think it is. And it's a town maintained road now. If we do this, that's how the town ended up at Lily Pond, was because they, somebody got a picture of the town crew up there cutting brush. Town was court-ordered to take that road open. Somebody's gonna get a picture of them down there, and we're gonna own that.
Well, the letter that we're writing right now, I would assume that this would have some legality to it, our town attorney would write it, I could hope.
And everything gets lost in this town, in a few years down the road, and two or three different owners.
I would say.
They'll own it, just like Lily Pond.
I would say, what I'm asking, if the attorney writes it and the butter signs off on this letter, that it, this permit will be going with the deed of his property, we record it with the deed, along with the legal legistating that we hold no responsibility once the wall is put back in kind. And that becomes a legal, recorded document with the deed, so it should never be lost.
The town can't even find half the deeds we need now.
Mr. Holt?
When you apply for this permit, you have to, don't they wanna know exactly what we're gonna do down there? Permit, what are we gonna tell them?
That's all in the application.
The permit, the permit that Cindy Belkus will put in there for us, she'll have, she'll have to have the slopes and everything else in there along with it. Basically, probably will say that they would be putting a wall back in kind, never had a permit. And that we're applying, they would be applying for a permit to put a wall back in, so it would be the. Well, am I, am I right with that, Ken?
Yes, and the thing is, is that the permit actually has to be signed by the landowner, is we can't, we're applying for it through the town, I mean, we're doing it, but it actually has to be signed by the landowner.
I understand that, but if, if I was to say that, I wanna know how that wall's gonna be put in it. Because if, gonna put it back in the same way it was, it's not right, because I looked at that.
We're only responsible to put it back the way it was, we're not responsible to rebuild that wall. But we do, but it, it was not, it was not done like a retaining wall we know.
Roberts, do you have anything else you could add to this for us tonight?
Yeah, just that, yeah, it's being replaced in kind, and that's how the permit will read. In kind is basically what was there before, it's putting back up, we're not changing anything, so we're just saying that it fell, we're just gonna put it back up in place, which, I, from what I understand, will satisfy DES. If we change it, then it becomes a whole different plan.
Mr. McDonald has a question.
Kenny, are we putting drainage or stone behind it?
I, personally, putting it together, I would probably put a piece of fabric, put stone behind it, and put a PVC pipe into it, if I was to do it.
Now we're adding more cost.
Yeah.
Not going back the way it spoke, the, the way it was, and we just need three more men, three days, now we got fabric, stone, pipe.
Yeah, Virgil, you're only talking about a piece of fabric that's, you know, eight feet by four feet, and you're talking about five, five gallon buckets of stone, you're not talking about a, a lot.
You're gonna have more than a five gallon bucket of stone in there.
No, I mean, it's gonna take a few five gallon buckets, but that's all, it's not gonna, let's, if you, if you get a half a yard in there, you'd be lucky.
But we're also on a private piece of property, putting up a wall that fell down because it wasn't put in right. It's illegally put there, and the town's gonna do the permitting, put them up a wall, put the drainage behind it, all on private property.
Mr. Roberts, Mr. Whitman has a question for you.
If, if some of this discussion is, it's an illegal wall to begin with, so if the for the permit, they might not get it. Like they just told the law you had is illegal, you never had a permit for it. Then if that was the case, we wouldn't have to rebuild the wall at all, they probably wouldn't get a permit for nineteen hundred dollars. We're not, we're not gonna pay the property owner's bank for permission.
Anything other questions, Mr. Roberts? Mr. Roberts, you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Um, Liz, would you like to add anything to this? Gentlemen, I, um, recommendation how we can do with this, I will take out the idea, pay the expenses, that it is so long as the homeowner pays for the wetlands permits to put the wall back in kind. Then once approved, that the town itself will put the wall back in the way it was, according to pictures of this, in December, Mr. Rochelle has, and then once this work is completed, we hold no liability to this wall going forward. And this letter comes from our town attorney to the providing property.
Is that a motion?
I guess you could say that, yes.
Okay, I'll say it.
Get all that?
Hey, Dave, but I do have a question on that.
So you got a second? This guy.
So you mentioned the nineteen hundred dollars for the cost of the permit to come out of the town budget.
No, to come from the landowner, be responsible to the landowner.
Okay, rather than line eight nine nine?
Yes.
Okay, because I thought you.
Originally, I, originally I said that before I listened to more and said, all right, let's have the property owner pay for the permit themselves. If they get the permit approved, we'll go and put the wall back in kind. That way they were not using any tax dollars except for the labor of the highway.
Well, that is tax dollars.
I said, the only tax dollars we'd be using is what we'd be using for the laboring highway.
And the stone, the fabric, the pipe.
Kenny, I'll donate to the stone, the fabric, if you get, if we can get this job done.
Like I said, it's probably gonna be an eight by four piece of fabric, now, what I use is a piece of road fabric, I just cut it out of a three hundred and fifty foot roll.
But if the board approves this, come see me, I will donate to the three quarter inch crushed stone to go behind your barrier, so there's no expense, and a piece of pipe, so there's no expenses to the taxpayer in this community, so maybe we can move on from this tonight.
Yes, sir.
The town can do that. Mr. Holt?
Hey, uh, I would like to see, uh, all man hours and costs by the town kept track of for this one project. Uh, and also, the word in your motion was put back in place, in kind.
In kind.
Well, if you put fabric and stone and stuff in there, that's not in kind.
Well, I'm gonna donate, I'm, I'm gonna donate, so there won't be any cost going upon the town at that time.
Word, too. But that's, but I, I would just like all, all the time kept track of.
Mr. Roberts, is that something you could, is that something you could do, is keep track of the cost of the land?
Everything that we do is, everything we do is on a work order, whoever's assigned to the project, each one of them will do an individual work order, exactly what they've done, what they, what time they have, you know, they'll, they'll have everything intact.
Okay, sir, would that satisfy you, Mr. Holt?
Yes, on that, if you.
Rochelle? Mr. Roberts, I'll take it one step further, use two men. Not to help, put that wall back up, and be happy to count. I'd be more than happy to assist, so use just two men. Be done with it.
Motion's been made, second. Any other discussion? Hold for this, McDonald. Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Holt? Mr. Wentworth, yes. Who, uh, motion passes, affirmative, three, four, two against. Okay, Mr. Roberts, is, I think that's the only thing really we have with you tonight.
Yes, I do, sir.
Thank you for the signs you put out, they did work on Jesus Valley Road this weekend, I did hear, we didn't hear any bad responses. I know, uh, on Mount Road, there was a couple of concerns, but I believe that's been taken care of, but thank you for getting those signs out.
Yes, sir.
Have a good night, sir.
Thank you.
You as well, thank you.
Good night, Mr. Roberts. All right, gentlemen, moving on to number four, Levy Park Trustee, that patient. Back to the jury, a two. Oh, yeah, right, I crossed that out, all right. Emergency Management Homeland Security Grant, Mr. Heath, are you with us?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, chief. So, most of the selectmen know all about this, this is about the sign that we have now, it's a traffic circle, and going for this grant to hopefully get most of the expenses for this. I figured I'd just let you bring it up, the board up to speed again about this program, if you'd like, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, what this is called is an EMPG grant, and that's an emergency management performance grant. It's a matching grant, but there's two types of matches a town can do. You can either do a hard match, which is cash out of the budget, or you can do a soft match, which is time, um, work time and man hours that are put into the project. For this particular grant, we're, we're allowed to utilize all of the emergency management team's time. Uh, meaning, so those two meetings a week that we've had collectively since this pandemic has started, I can calculate all of the time, expenses, benefits that are paid out from the town, and utilize that to match the federal funds coming in as a soft match. So, they would, in, in, basically, in essence, they would pay almost ninety-nine percent of the sign, the only residual. The grant is capped at fifteen thousand, and the price range of, of signs that we've been looking at right now are fifteen thousand. I believe you have the quote, you should have the quote right in front of you, it's right around six hundred and seventy-six dollars?
Yes, sir.
Um, so that, um, that's what the grant is, so what's gonna be, what's being presented to you right now is the grant application. So we've been preliminary, preliminarily approved for the grant from Homeland Security. This is the contract outlining the parameters for using this grant. Now, by signing this contract, the town is agreeing that we would abide by the terms of the grant, should we utilize it. Now, we have one year to utilize this money within the grant period, and that grant period is outlined in the contract in front of you. Um, this is not an obligation, if something changes, if, you know, we decide it's not the right direction to go in for the town or whatnot, you are not obligated by signing this. Because this is a reimbursement grant, we would have to make the purchase initially, and then submit it back. So by signing the, the contract, it's an agreement to the terms, should we choose to move forward with it. Um, the other thing, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You, um, said that, that you're gonna have a ninety-nine percent, um, payment on it, but the, the grant's only fifteen thousand, what's he, where's the other one, where's the rest of it coming from?
So the, uh, so the grant is for fifteen thousand, and we're gonna, we need to match it with at least fifteen thousand, which would be our soft match. The, the, the other, if you're talking about the other six hundred and seventy-four dollars, so when we rented the sign, I made the sign company an agreement that if we were to get our grant, that a portion, fifty percent of our rental cost on the rental sign would be reimbursed towards the new purchase. Because it's the same manufacturer, and they agreed to that, so they're gonna let us, they're gonna put another three hundred and fifty in if we move forward with the purchase. Um, and then the remaining balance would be roughly around three hundred, three hundred and fifty that we would utilize out of the emergency management, um, line item.
Good job.
So, it, it, it covers the majority of it, like I said, it, it's very close to almost a hundred percent that they would cover.
Any other questions for the chief? I'm good, Mr. Chairman, I don't understand the motion, to accept the terms of emergency management performance grant. As presented in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars purchased in electronic message board, furthermore, if the board acknowledges that the total cost of this project would be thirty thousand, which the town will be responsible for a fifty percent match, fifteen thousand, so move. I have a motion, motion made by room number second by Paul Rochelle, open for discussion again.
Now, the way you worded your motion with the fifty percent match from the town.
Yes.
We're getting ninety-nine percent paid for.
Right.
What it is, motion of, and it binds the town to the fifty percent.
We're, we're not, we're not taking, we're applying for the grant now, just because we're making the motion that way does not mean that we will get the grant. Correct me if I'm wrong here, Chief, but the other part of the money that will be coming up, the fifteen thousand dollars, is from all the time that the chief and Mr. McDougall has spent researching this, going after the sign, putting it out there, all their efforts, talking about the sign in there. His time, Mr. McDougall's time will be calibrated, and that's where most of that fifteen thousand dollars is coming.
Right, that's the soft match.
Just to, uh, just to add to that, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, it's actually not just mine and the lieutenant's time. It's every single member of the emergency management team, it's Liz's, it's John's, it's the fire chiefs, I had Laura pull up everybody's, um, hourly cost, um, broken down with benefits, but all of us. So every single meeting for all of us in those meetings, um, not just talking about the sign, but it's any, it's all the emergency management time we've put in on this pandemic.
Like Mr. Coss.
Mr. Roberts, I'll let you finish your question.
We have to put that in the motion. So when he fills it out and comes back, it's already been motioned, so we don't get...
Nope, I don't believe so, because what, what it says, the chief said we have a year, if we approve this...
This is just for the application.
This is just for the application, correct, Chief?
Yes, that's correct, I'm still doing some factor, manufacturer comparison between a couple of models, I think I had mentioned in some of our meetings, but just so everybody's up to speed. The one that we have at the traffic circle has limited capability, it's only eight characters per line, and we found that hard to work with because it's designed for road construction. So this new sign that I, that you've been presented with right now is an example of a matrix board, board, excuse me, matrix board. It has, instead of eight characters per line, it's eighteen characters, plus it does different symbols and images, and it's more designed for our special events, disasters, law enforcement use versus, uh, geared towards road construction notices. But, um, there are some other manufacturers out there that I, I've been, you know, pulling specs on and looking at, so I'm trying to find things that are compared apples to apples as far as what they offer and what their capabilities are. And then at that point, through discussions with the EMT, uh, team during our meetings, I will bring back a recommendation to the board with a final price and a model and make, um, so you folks can make a final decision before the purchase is made.
Mr. Holt?
If, Chief, well, if, if we apply for this permit, uh, for this grant, and we receive it, we don't have, I think you said we don't have to expend it if we don't want it.
Right, this is, we won't actually not receive anything unless we make a purchase, because it's a reimbursement, so I would actually physically have to make the purchase, we'd have to cut the check. I have to invoice everything and make copies of it, send it back to emergency management, and then they cut a check in return as a reimbursement, um, to close out the grant. So if you approve this tonight and we don't utilize it, it means we just don't make a purchase, it becomes null and void after the time period's up.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, any further discussion? Motion, yeah? Yes, Mr. Whitman?
So, if we purchase this for the grant, does that mean we don't have to put it out to bid? Like, we don't have to get three bids on three signs from three companies?
Liz?
I think because it's a specialty item, that, want, whatever company comes up with to match, match the grant would be fine.
I only bring it up because we had an earlier discussion about, we're gonna stick to our guns about bids now.
Yeah, yeah, so there are some specialty items out there, that, that the board, you know, at times really does need to, like, waive the rules, go with the one quote, and, and everything like, like that. But in this particular situation, it's definitely a specialty, you know.
We're not boxed into a corner with this either.
No, and then the other thing is, besides this, down the road, when we could have used the sign for other things.
Yes.
We will have one here for road reconstruction or emergency services down the road.
Even all public. Any, any messages?
So a motion been made, second by Mr. Rochelle, correct? Any further discussion? I'll poll the board, Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes, vote isn't in the affirmative. Chief, thank you, have a very lovely night, and my commendations to you and your officers for the weekends, the way they've handled everything in town.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, you folks have a good evening.
Good job, thank you.
Bye-bye.
So next, we'll move on to number four again, Levy Park Trustee's application for federal grant, do we have Mr. Downing on the phone?
Hey, again.
Good evening, Jonathan, how are you? You there, John?
Fucking Jonathan Downing, yep, down at the bay again.
Tell you why.
Gentlemen, before you, tonight, you have a application for federal grant for parks and trails, which Levy, Levy Park Trustees would like to apply for to use and upgrade existing trails on that property. You need the board of selectmen to approve this, uh, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Downing to explain to the board of selectmen a little more in depth.
Fucking down the bay again.
You're all set, sir.
I don't know, I don't know why they just don't do, uh, you know...
Jonathan?
Nope, you can't figure out the phone.
We hear you, we can hear you, Jonathan.
No, you hear us.
Yeah, we hear you, but evidently you're not hearing us.
Are you hearing us at all?
What?
Are you hearing us?
No.
I hear you say...
Oh, oh, hello? I can't hear him, can you hear him?
How about, how about if you folks disconnect and we retry to reconnect, would that be the best thing, Josh?
Okay.
Can you hang? Gotta yell at it. Go ahead. Can you hang up and then redial it again?
Okay.
Virgil, you have to mouth off?
I can hear you, boy.
I'm right, I'm right beside the mic.
No, they can't hear me, I'm on mute.
Oh, you are?
Okay, can you, can you folks hang up your phone and then redial back in again, please?
Jonathan, this is Paul Rochelle, could you guys hang up, and we're gonna try it again, and we can only talk to one of you, Jonathan, we'll just talk with you, okay?
Isn't that funny, Virgil can't shut his fucking mouth?
All right, uh, at this time, Jonathan, can you hear me? We hear it, yeah. We're gonna hang up the phone because that language will not be tolerated here.
It doesn't work the second time?
He thinks I'm doing all the talking for everybody.
Can we dial, can we dial the tax server back? It's your, if they get on, dial back to play. You might be able to, you can dial back in.
So at this time?
They're just connected, huh?
He's still connected, okay.
He don't wanna speak back. Would it be best if I stated this time, Mr. Downing, could you please recall at this time? Jonathan, you cannot speak into our meeting now, but what I can suggest to you is to call back into our meeting, Josh is waiting for your phone call, once you are connected, we will bring you back into the meeting. But I would ask you not to use foul language in the meeting that other folks can hear, please, especially about Mr. McDonald. If you try that again, that'd be great, and I'll wait to hear from Josh to see if we're reconnected. All right, folks, we're gonna move on to number five, cemeteries, please. Mr. McDonald?
I just wanted to make a mention that we got more, few people at the town, we got more stones that have fallen over up on Cherry Valley Road, the cemetery on the corner there, that we maintain, there's more stones on the ground there.
Okay, and that would be, the, that money would come out of the, um...
As long as it's a town cemetery, it would come out of one of the...
It's not a town cemetery.
We, we, uh, perpetual care.
We do a private cemetery, that's the one, we do private, we do care on private cemeteries, that's a private cemetery, we do care on...
Yeah, the perpetual care, yes.
So that money should come out of, if there's any there or not. Uh, but that's something we'll get, but I believe there was a letter from the town attorney on that, I think we got any emails about it, about the headstones and possibly doing contract services out of it. Because the gentleman that's working at the cemetery cannot do the work by himself, and due to the state guidance, it's being apart six feet, he doesn't feel he can do it the same. That, was that my recollection of that letter?
Jimmy Anderson, yes, the cemetery's accident.
So the rest of the town crews that we see working in there, not six feet apart, we should shut everything down?
I, I'm just stating what was in the letter.
I know, and I seen the letter, and I think it's, I think the letter's wrong, if you're working with a person, and, and, whole town's been doing it, and they know they're safe because they check their temperatures in the morning, make sure they're not sick or anything. And with stood stones up right along, without contracting them out and everything else, and spending a thousand dollars a stone, they stand them up and re-brace them.
But he is giving estimates from, two, two estimates from contractors to do the work.
But for years now, we've done it ourselves, and ain't had a problem with it.
But we're in the middle of a pandemic.
What is the town policy for town employees working together? From the emergency management team?
Social distancing is most impossible, like the highway department, each one has their own truck, no.
Well, I know, but when they're out, full patching holes, breaking horns, digging out potholes, cutting brush, not six feet apart. Just like in the finance office, you have two women that work there, they're not quite six feet apart there, nobody's wearing masks, you have two of the top administrators office, uh, selectmen's office, and aren't six feet apart. So I guess, when can employee use this and when don't they use it? So I, I guess Virgil does have a point there, because this, to me, is part of the sexton's job, is to redo, re-point monuments within the cemetery. We should be hiring another individual for helping all the lines and doing that work to share. So I'm really trying to wonder why we're going out to bid on something that they're, they're being paid to do.
It's because of the pandemic.
And everybody blames everything on the pandemic, and it's...
You know, these are different times.
We have people riding two in a cab, that ain't six feet apart, you got people working in the town hall, ain't six feet apart. I mean, their temperatures are checked in the morning, that's outside work, most of these stones, one person can stand them up.
So how about if we bring this up at the next emergency management meeting for discussion?
There goes, he's hanging down the road again.
No, wait, wait, Virgil, stop, we didn't say we'd make a decision on this. All, all I'm asking is, does the highway department, all those guys down there, parks are right, they stay six feet apart when they're working?
Highway is, yes, from what I have been told, yes.
Mr. Kim, so, and all the other works, when they get in a hole, and they're on a dig together, they're six, they get...
As much as they can.
All, all I'm asking is, so it sounds like this individual, if he gets somebody to help him in the grounds of the cemetery, he will not be working really with the gentleman in the grounds, because he won't, he wants to do a social... This, there's times in this pandemic, which I realize in my store, I cannot keep six feet apart from people I'm working, it, it's just impossible, because the job has to get done. So this individual wants to keep the social distancing, but yet he wants to hire two contractors, a contractor come in with two guys and do it for him, so he does, something's just not making sense to me on this list.
Right.
I guess, yes, Thursday, we should bring this up.
Okay.
I, I, I really, I really think we should, because work that has always been done by other sextons that we've had in the community, now this sexton wants to go out and, and, I wanna hope that it's because of the pandemic. I really wanna hope that that's his reasoning, but I just, I don't know.
And we're also on that cemetery.
Mr. Holt had his hand up quite a lot, Mr. Holt.
Uh, basically, he's put in writing his concerns about the pandemic. Now, if, if you're gonna put another town employee with him to put up headstones, you're gonna be within six feet of each other. And if he gets the epidemic, he, it's, it, that's not very good. Now, it's a, a town employee, if, if they're working within six feet of another person, they can go home and not work, and the government will pay them. Because it's not essential. So Liz is right.
It's just funny that we'll ask private contractors to do jobs that we're supposed to be doing ourselves.
I, I understand the philosophy.
I mean, that is, it's just, just, now, I, I'm gonna stay out of that, get myself in trouble. Mr. McDonald?
First of all, even for them to go in and get the lawnmowers in the shadow when they meet in the morning, they're closer than six feet. Those stones aren't that heavy, one man can set them up, Jack used to do it for years for us and stood them up and did the work, one person.
I done them alone myself.
And if you can't do them, then maybe we gotta look to replace that job.
Okay.
Second is, we never put that out to bid, because we've been watching, trying to rebuild that trust fund, because it got run down to zero. And we've been watching it and trying to keep everything in-house to get that trust fund to build back up.
So at this point, we're gonna bring it up to emergency management, I'm gonna recommend bringing up to emergency management, okay, and we'll bring it back to next week's meeting.
I would like to make my final comment about the cemetery sexton. He's a very good employee, and he is a very hard worker, and he has high ethics, and he would not be doing something to just try to get out of doing something, just for the record.
Okay, I'll hear that.
Got one more thing, I wasn't saying that he ain't a good employee, and he does a nice job, and we've got on him a couple of times about different things. It has nothing to do with the way he's working, it's what he's pushing it to, and we shouldn't be spending the extra money.
Well, let's refer to the employee, not him or her. So this time, we'll bring it before the emergency management meeting on Thursday, then we will bring it back up. Is Mr. Downing back on the phone, sir?
He's just remaining connected.
So he can hear us, but not talk to us.
Exactly.
So even though I said that he needed to hang up, redial back, and he hasn't done.
Should we try it again?
Try, we'll try, well, we can, can we connect with him now?
I can, I can enable talking.
Let's try to enable a talk. Let's try to enable a talk. Try every more time.
I can.
Yes, sir.
I didn't know, figured about to turn on his microphone so that whatever he says, vote for.
Yes, sir.
Doesn't need to wear it. Mind him that anti-shit.
So.
Ready?
Mr. Downing, are you still with us?
He gets the raspberries.
Jonathan, are you there?
Yep.
Okay. So I guess we're here to talk about your grant for Levy Park trustees. Um, if you can be the only one speaking, so we can keep the communication line going openly. And then watch what we have to say because we did hear you say something about Mr. McDonald, which really wasn't appropriate. So if we can move on, I'm gonna turn the floor over to you. And have you talked about this grant that you folks wanna apply at the Levy Park?
Forget about it.
Are you still there? Okay, at this time, I'm gonna disconnect the phone call, Jonathan, because we don't, we don't seem to be, being able to have two ways to communicate. So at this time, I'm gonna disconnect the phone. We're done?
Mr. Chairman, can we look through the grants, still vote on it?
We can. Liz can talk to about it. I'm sure she's read through it. I've read through it. You know, I agree. A lot of work, there's a lot of, a lot of paperwork, a lot of rules and regulations, what you read they're looking for. And this is the cost of the, to the town. All right. Cost of the town, as long as they meet all the requirements.
Mm-hmm.
The only thing I didn't see is, it was looking for cost factors in the back. There was, um, what it's gonna cost to do certain things, if they're using private individuals, contractors. And I did not see that in there, so.
No, it just has an hourly.
Hourly rate.
Hourly rate.
Yeah. Which has to be followed by the federal guidelines. So Liz, do you have anything you can add to this?
I'm sorry, I don't.
You think possibly you could contact Mr. Downing during the week? Bring him back up. There is a deadline on this, um... Who is that?
It said something about in June nineteenth or John, something like that?
June, June.
It says June.
June nineteenth.
June nineteenth. There is a deadline, so we don't wanna procrastinate on this. Mr. McDonald?
Um, I think we should okay it tonight. I mean, it's an eighty percent grant with a twenty percent match. And it's for the trail systems. You can put in extra pressure to work on the stuff, and I, I think that we could vote on this and...
Right. And who's gonna be filling out this grant, um, grant?
I believe the Levy Park trustees.
They will. Okay, because I, I really don't like filling out anything. I understand Levy Park trustees are in charge of the, the park. But there's nothing checked off in any of these boxes for us. Will you be cutting trees? Will you be doing this or that? I really think in the future, all that should be done before we vote to approve some. That's my feeling. But if you gentlemen wanna entertain a motion tonight to approve this from the Levy Park trustees?
Well, even if we approve it, it's gonna go through the PACS and RECs board if they're gonna do anything on the town.
Not necessarily. The PACS and REC is only an advisory board. They have no authority. If I'm not mistaken.
Well, then...
Well, not on this particular piece of property. It's the Levy Park trustees.
But they wanna do...
They're still just an advisory board, right?
PACS and REC commission?
Yeah.
They do have some authority, but, but they're pretty specific. Um, and it wouldn't be for this particular park because that's a separate park?
Right. Levy Park is separate.
Yes.
But it's, they wanna do, um, the letter S, the field, uh, um...
Possibly doing, yes, to the loop trail, yes.
So that puts it into PACS and REC's hands. But we can put in a motion before they do any on the town property, they come in front of us. And let us know what we're doing.
I can try again.
And we can just put that right in the motion.
Exactly.
So we can find out later what's going on, but this gives them the chance to fill out the grant and try to get it. Before the deadline.
So ahead and make the motion.
I make a motion that we allow Levy Park trustees to fill out the grant for eighty, twenty, twenty percent match. And before the work's done on the town trails, we would like to have Jonathan or somebody come in front of us to let us know what they're gonna do and if there's gonna be changing of the trails or anything.
It does say, subject to PACS and REC review.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Virgil Mark. To approve for the uh, grant for the trail system of Levy Park by Levy Park trustees. Seconded by Paul Aruchel. Any further discussion?
Yes.
To clarify, a motion, Mr. Chairman, sir.
Did you mean reference the grant be approved?
Not for the expenditures, but any work being done on the town trails. We rent Levy Park. That, that's done by the rest of the trails, if they're gonna spend money on them and do any work on them, they'll have to come in front of us and and, um, let us know what they're doing on them before they can expend the money and do it.
So it be any expenditure?
Well, yeah, except for the Levy Park guys.
Okay. Motion is made. Second, and any further discussion? I'll pull the board, Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes. Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Voters in a firm, all, all five four. So at this time, we want the number six to rumble strips.
Yes. I read their email and stuff. And they're going by what the grade stakes are for starting start, rumble strips. I would like to have Kenny get a hold of them and meet with the guys because they still got these rumble strips on your entering of the roads. They got them set right at the ninety. So you're gonna have to cross them to come back, come into even the top of the town hill the way they got it set. I'd like Kenny to meet with the state and get them to open them up so you're not crossing rumble strips pulling into roads or pulling out of roads. I mean, they've got them right in front of Legion. Every guy that pulls in down to where Legion and the tie washing stuff is, has gotta cross rumble strips. But they set them up, they're given a little bit of entrance to coming out for the exits. But the, to enter into them, they got them right at a ninety still. And I think that needs to be changed. I think Kenny should meet with them and...
So what if you have Mr. Roberts meet with the project engineer from the state? We'll need to find out who that is. As continental is the contractor doing it. We'll have to find out who the engineer is from the state to work with him so they can go back, so he can go back to his designers and bosses and say that now something happened. I agree. There should be a much wider opening to get in and out of the streets.
Yes.
And even driveways.
Yeah. I think that'll stop a lot of headaches.
Very much. So, are you, is the board in favor of that? Consensus? I don't need a vote on that?
I think that's...
Mr. Holt?
Definitely.
Mr. Whitman?
Yeah.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Yes.
Donald, Mr. Wentworth, yes. Take care of that for us. That would be great. Ending in new business, we're gonna move on to old business. Parking with Mount Major, a letter to the Hampshire DOT. Edit in the back gear binder, just a minute, gentlemen.
Hi, Ray.
Yep.
Sir, it's questions on it. You know, the chief could be on the phone again if he want him, but I don't know if he really needed to bring him back with this letter. This is our official request. We have no parking, but on both sides by the scenic view there. Anywhere there's guy real coming around from scenic view from the entrance of Mount Major Park heading towards the bay, past the scenic view, no parking. And making it permanent.
Permanent, exactly.
At the time that we had, uh, put up temporarily right now on the westbound lane, that would be stayed permanently, and I believe it has been extended a little bit further down. Headed west towards Route eleven D on the western DS.
Correct.
This letter is in front of you because of the request by the emergency management team and the board of selectmen. And you've motioned to approve this letter as written, and you have the town administrator send it up on our behalf.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made. Send the letter, Mr. Allen Hansken, District Engineer, Hampshire Department, Transportation District Three, a letter pertaining to no parking on Route eleven in the area of the scenic view, Mount Major parking, Mount Major hiking trails, and towards the west, west end of Route eleven D. Seconded by Mr. Holt. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I'll pull the board, Mr. Holt.
Aye.
Mr. Whitman?
Aye.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes. All voting affirmative. Anything else you want the state to add, man?
Nope.
Make sure I send that letter to the ladies, because I think most of you guys are, have already signed it. Sure.
It's in the file?
Yeah. Good. Moving on to selectmen's reports. Mr. Holt, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Whitman?
No.
Mr. Rochelle?
No.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
Mr. Wentworth, I do have two things, emergency management, in, today. The parking was discussed in the bay, and the police will be working with the gentleman, trying to teach the people, inform the people of social distancing. As the fire chief stated, they will be working with the restaurants that will be especially the takeout. That's gonna be the hardest thing right now. Uh, picnic tables were brought up. They will still be taped off. Only reason being is, we do not go down there disinfect them every time a family leaves from the picnic tables. There will be possibly signs made up that these, that will state that these tables will, are not disinfected on a daily basis. So the tapes will stay there. If they sit there with the tapes there, they sit there, the police department's not gonna go and remove them. But we have to put something down there saying these tables are not disinfected. I believe the fire chief is going to work on that with, um, the fire department. They're gonna laminate it and attach it to that. The PACS are right to ask if we should remove them. You don't wanna go to that extreme. Have them remove them, then you're gonna have to bring them back. Second thing is we're not taking public entertainment. Okay. Um, second thing is, summer water lines. It was discussed today, this week here, these winter seasonal water lines that are on year-round water will be turned on this week. As of May eleventh, the East Side Drive, which is Route twenty-eight A, will be turned on. And on the, well, we meet the, the eighteen, Route eleven side, summer water lines will be turned on. It might not make everybody happy. I'm recording this, tell me if I'm wrong. I think I had the dates right on this. Might not make everybody happy, but hopefully it will satisfy everybody that the water will be being turned on. Right now, with the social distancing and everything else, if we have a major break, we'd have to leave the summer water line, bring one guy back, and one guy can't be up there in the woods trying to turn some water line on. There has been concerns that people wanna come up. This will allow us to have all summer water turned on for Memorial Day weekend. And I'm also doing it in a safe manner, turning the water on that the guys can take care of the leaks, and it'll be turned on in adequate fashion, so there's no disruption to anything else. So hopefully this will satisfy a lot of people, might not make everybody happy, that it's not me turned on at once, but this is the best the management team could offer at this time. So it is a plan going forward. Really, other than that, that was the most important issue today, brought up, the emergency management issue until May eleventh. Yes, sir.
Can I add one thing to that, or discussion at to the our next emergency meeting, is the public restaurants?
Public restaurants.
If you would mention that, please discuss that, see if something can be done.
See what we can do. Mr. Holt?
Did you, was Levy Park public water?
Levy Park water will be stayed on. It will not be turned off.
That's not gonna be...
It's part of the governor's orders, if you, if you've read them or heard about them on the weekend, all water bubblers and water fountains will be turned off, so not turned off. That will be, that will be considered as a water fountain. So that will be kept left off.
And what were the dates again, are you?
This week here, starting take some of those folks that go down to Florida in the wintertime, but have a year-round home here, but they have their water turned off, and they're on a year-round water system. They will have their waters turned on this week. May, uh, May eleventh, starting Monday of next week, Route twenty-eight A, which is also known as East Side Drive, will have their summer water lines turned on there.
Summer, okay.
Uh, and then the summer water line on Route eleven west, past the Back Bay Bridge, as I know as the Back Bay Bridge, that will be turned on the week of March eighteen.
Right.
May, excuse me.
So like, like you said, before Memorial Day, oh...
Memorial Day, wow. Okay.
Thank you.
So if anybody calls you, that's the plan, the emergency management team. And I, I hope that will satisfy a lot of folks. And that is the end of my report. I'll move on to the town administrators.
Okay. Um, I'd like to get some dates from you for a workshop for the, uh, Shively's dog. I need some dates that I can give to our attorney.
I, I'm pretty open.
Does he prefer, uh, during the day and not evening?
Um, no, he, um, he will, he's going to come here, so like five o'clock, six o'clock, that would be fine.
Five o'clock, yeah.
But, I could, any day. I'm gonna ask him, so he reads closer story.
Five thirty.
Five be better.
Five thirty.
Are there any, Virgil, what about you? Five thirty be okay? Okay. Are there any particular dates?
You should, for like the twelfth?
Uh, I can't do the twelfth.
Twelfth is planning board.
Okay. Thirteen?
Step ball, okay. Was it fifteen on Wednesday?
I could do that.
I will, I won't, I won't commit to a hundred percent because if a, a load of hay comes in, then I have to get, I'll have to go get on Wednesday night after work. Folks can meet without me, and I can follow up on it afterwards. Just right now, hay's a scarce supply. I have a lot of customers that need hay, and the only time I can do it is at nighttime. So.
Oh, can we have the meeting during the day?
Uh, I, I can't leave the store right now.
Yeah. What's our typical during the day?
Oh, I was just trying to, I really worked you there.
Uh, Wednesday night, we can try next Wednesday night. If I can get to the hay on Tuesday night, I will go and get the hay on Tuesday.
You change it to Thursday, it's not?
Thursday would be a better...
I don't think we have a, we're not, you know, anything yet.
How about you, Phil?
I could do the, I could do Wednesday or Thursday, as long as it's, uh, no earlier than five thirty.
Is that better for you, Robin?
Yep.
Thursday be...
Thursday.
Thursday, fourteen.
Thursday, fourteen.
Okay.
Fourteen. This is five thirty. Yes, sir.
Nine twenty. Eight right here, right?
Yes, sir.
Um...
Then we'll have Mr. Shively, are we having Mr. Shively join us with this?
I'm just gonna ask that.
It's up to you, folks.
I don't think it would hurt to have him here.
You do, I...
I think he should be...
I don't think he should come in town hall. We're not letting anybody else come in town hall.
Oh, you'd have to do it by phone.
Do it by phone, yes.
Yep.
We'll have him on phone and the rest of us here.
And the rest of the public would be on phone, too.
So I, I'd like one more date, just in case the fourteenth isn't good for Jim Sutler. Maybe something in the following week.
Week?
Uh, following week, that would be starting the eighteenth. Uh, sorry, sorry. The nineteenth.
I couldn't do the nineteenth.
Twenty, twenty.
Couldn't do the twentieth. Couldn't do the twentieth.
Twenty, it's a Wednesday.
Yes.
Now, put me down for the twenty.
That's the ultimate?
Fourteen to the twenty.
So I'll let you know which one it's gonna be.
Okay.
Uh, thank you. Um, the next item I had, I put a document at your seat titled TA report. Um, this is a draft letter that's gonna be sent to the feds, and I, it came across the manager's listserv, and I thought it might be kind of nice for the town of Alton to sign it, so I brought it forward to you for your consideration, to have me sign it on your behalf. I think it's an electronic signature. And the, the letter is, um, asking for Speaker Pelosi and Minority Leader McCarthy for robust funding for local governments in the next COVID-nineteen response package due to revenue loss. And to take action to ensure that small to mid-sized municipalities and counties can access direct federal assistance.
So who sent this?
It would be the New Hampshire Municipal Association would send it to Washington, DC. On behalf of the
towns.
The various towns.
The members, which were a membership, never not.
Right.
And that, but... So... Okay, so right now...
So what do you need?
Well, well, she's asking for a motion for us to approve it, to have her sign on behalf of the board of selectmen, send it to Washington.
To be, there's gonna be a list of towns on it...
That approve it.
That are gonna be signing this letter, I thought it might be nice if you want, it's up to you.
Hey. Will you send it to Mitch McConnell and the rest of them?
It's being sent to...
Or just the two Democrats?
No, it's a Republican and Democrat, Mr. McCarthy is a minor, yeah, minor, minor...
Yeah, McCarthy's a Republican.
Senate total.
Because the ones that are promoting stimulus bill comes out of the House, that's why the Senate, the House first, hopefully wants to get it prepared.
I just think we should send it to a, send it total.
So it's not really our decision, we, the, the folks know the best place to send it first for now, perhaps there'll be another one later.
That's places to come back.
Make a motion to approve this letter, had Liz, the answer, the town of Alton.
No movement.
Motion made, second it, I'll pull the board, Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Reluctantly, yes.
Reluctantly, yes, Mr. LaRochelle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes, vote in a firm.
Thank you.
Anything else, ma'am?
Nothing for opening.
Right. Approval of minutes, April twenty-seven, twenty twenty.
I make a motion, we approve the April twenty-seven, twenty twenty, um, selectmen minutes.
Second. April, by Mr. McDonald, to approve April twenty-seven, twenty twenty regular minutes, seconded by Mr. Holt, I'll pull, any discussion? For the board, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes, vote in a firm, five four. Next, I have, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda, uh, May fourth, as read. Second?
Prove the consent agenda as submitted for May fourth, twenty twenty, seconded by Mr. Rochelle, any discussion? Pull the board, Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Holt?
Yes.
This time, discretionary action requests for appointments, no discussion majority vote required to allow, not to allow. This time, gentlemen, I'll entertain the motion in a non-public session, and with RSA ninety-one dash eight, colon three, paragraph two E. Second.
Oh, second.
I'll pull the board, you go on non-public session, Mr. Holt?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Rochelle?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Yes. Folks, we're now in a non-public session, so the audio, public audio will be turned off at this...